Festerson.
Here.
Garnett.
Here.
Jaram.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Gary Garnett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those that attend regularly and watch us on cable regularly, you've heard over the years a number of times from the council in our invocation where we've talked about gun violence to a great degree. And it unfortunately still is happening today, not only here but across the country. I would just like to shift gears for a moment and also think about when you do turn on the news, whether it's on the radio or on visual. Another weapon, if you will, is the motor vehicle. And Omaha has not been spared from the disasters that have happened in our city and across the country, if you will. And those experiences have caused great pain to a lot of families, a lot of loved ones, the community. So I would ask you to think about that. And I'm not saying, how many in here can drive a vehicle? Okay? And how many of you consider yourselves good drivers? I hope everybody raises their hands. And the majority of drivers today obey the law. And there's that percentage out there that when they get behind the wheel of a car, you'll realize that they've got a 2,000-pound-plus weapon in their hands. And if they're not paying attention, they may wind up in one of the seas or cause someone to wind up in one of the seas, whether in court or casket. And that's what I told the folks, the blue shirts that work for me in my other life. So I would ask you to pray for those that have that problem. You continue to practice what you do in your good driving abilities. And if you would, remember DID. Distracted, impaired, or just plain drunk. Impaired could be on some other substance besides alcohol. And if there's an accident, somebody did it. Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication of Daily Record, the official newspaper, on June 17th, 2016, as very pre-council and regular state council meeting June 21st. A current copy of Meetings Act posted in white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence any phones or any other electronic devices that you may have at this time. Before we begin the regular portion of the meeting, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank our Vice President of the Council for taking care of business in my absence. I understand he did an outstanding job. And according to Mr. Pauls, he didn't try to consume too much power. So I just wanted to thank our Vice President for operating in my stead. Mr. Clerk.
The zoning order is on final rigging, Board of Attachments, item 5 through 8, or one case, 5 is ordinance to rezone, ordinance to approve a planned unit redevelopment overlay district in an R7 medium-density multifamily residential district. Property is also located within an ACL-1 PL area of civic importance overlay district located at 825 Park Avenue to approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 6 is resolution that the preliminary plat entitled 825 Park Avenue with a waiver of lot depth is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 7 is a resolution to replat transmitted here with entitled 825 Park Avenue is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 8 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 5 through 8 are today. Proponents, please.
Steven Held, representing the ownership of Uptown Properties LLC, proponent 11506 Nicholas Street. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 5 through 8. No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Milton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
5 through 8 passed 7 to 0. 9 through 12 is another case. 9 is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 69th and Pacific Street from Development Reserve District and Community Commercial District. 2 Community Commercial District property is also located within a flood fringe and floodway overlay district. 10 ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI. 2 65 area civic importance overlay district. Property is also located within flood fringe and floodway overlay district to incorporate in that district these properties. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 11 is the preliminary plat entitled Exorbitant Point is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 12 is the plat entitled Exorbitant Point is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 9 through 12 are today. Proponents, please.
President, Members of the Council, Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, 6920 Ventures LLC. We're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 9 through 12. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Milton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
9 through 12 passed 7 to 0. Resolution to write preliminary plats, item 13, resolution that the preliminary plat entitled Country Club Oaks replat 5 located southwest of 60th and State Streets with request for a waiver of street design standards is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And B is communications supporting.
Public hearing on agenda item 13 is today. Proponents, please. It'll come on.
Troy Meyerson, 409 South 17th Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Keith Basham, who is also here with me. We also have John Coolidge with Lampard Nielsen, who's the engineer for the project. Chairman, council members, the applicant is looking to downzone and replat his property at 60th and State from R6 to R3 instead of developing low-density multifamily residential on the property, which it is currently zoned for and is opposed by the neighbors. He's looking to develop six single-family homes or single-family lots on the property, which is more aligned with the surrounding neighborhood and is strongly supported by the neighbors. And we also have signed petitions from all but one of the residents who was out of town. But if I could submit those. So as you can see here, which is really hard to see, I think you have this in your packet, but there's three lots here off of a cul-de-sac there, then there's three lots up top off of a cul-de-sac there. And then down below, right here, are five existing townhomes that have been there for over 40 years. And then there's a road here, which is 60th. Is that 60th Court? And then Young Plaza is the one that goes right here in front of the townhomes. So what Keith is asking for is approval of his application, and he agrees to 2 through 5 of the recommended requests by the city in their recommendation report. But we respectfully disagree with Public Works requirement number 1, which asks for him to individually remove and replace approximately 230 linear feet of existing street right here, which is a private street and has been maintained for over 40 years by the existing townhome homeowners association. And it's a requirement by their covenants to maintain that. This new set of six single-family homes will also enter into contractual obligation to maintain that private street along with the cul-de-sacs that will be installed to city code, which are new improvements. So we ask that the city council approve the application in the same manner that the planning board did, which is take exception to number 1 and to approve 2 through 5 in the balance of the application. But we're, I'm open for any questions that you have. Keith is here. And then, like I said, we also have our engineer with Lampard Nielsen as well, if you have any questions that are above my pay grade.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is in my district up near Omaha Country Club, where development can be and sometimes is sensitive with the densities of the current neighborhoods and the surrounding area. So I've met with Mr. Basham and Mr. Meyerson and agree with the analysis he has presented. And I think it is a benefit to this area to downzone it, R6 to R3, which makes it a much less dense proposition. And I think it's a quality development that he's proposing. In fact, he lives right there. So no doubt with that and with his background as an architect. So I support the planning board action, which was to approve it as recommended today without condition number 1. And I understand why the department may have wanted that in there, particularly given all the discussion we've had about unimproved roads recently. But in my view, this is a little bit different in the respect that it's, first of all, a current road and a private road, and we're talking about literally 230 linear feet here. But then also the fact that it is within the association's covenants that they must maintain it going forward, and that's a clear understanding. So that mechanism is in place, and I wouldn't anticipate we'd ever have the issue 20 or 30 or 40 years from now that we do in some other areas. So with that, I'd go ahead and move approval as recommended by the planning board.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number 13. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know you did address this this morning. I just want to make sure that it's on record that 10, 15, 20 years from now, this will not come back to haunt us, sort of like some of the areas in my particular district. And, Mr. Festerson, is that what you implied to me this morning?
Yes, that's our clear understanding in conversations with the neighbors and the support they have, as well as in the covenants of the neighborhood association itself.
And I'm just curious, because I don't know this, but covenants, are they forever in a day, or do they sometimes go away?
I believe the covenants could be changed by the neighborhood association at some time, but it's their clear understanding and has been expressed here publicly on the record that this is their responsibility.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. President, Doc, if I could have you come back up, please. And you have to re-identify yourself.
Troy Meyerson, 409 South 17th Street.
Mr. Meyerson, for, I think it's Lot 3. Could you see that nice little skinny piece of thing that land?
Oh, you're talking about right there?
Yeah, just describe what that is.
So that's to allow for, as I understand, it's MUD, right? Yeah, utilities.
Utilities.
Yeah, utilities to reach from this 60th Street.
Uh huh.
Over to get to Lot 3.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 13. There are no further lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
13 is adopted, 7 to 0. Item number 14, resolution at the preliminary plat entitled Sterling Ridge Phase 2 located south of Hickory Street between 127th and 129th Street, along its attached conditions hereby accepted, preparation, final platas are authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Council. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here on behalf of the proponents, Lockwood Development and Sweetbrier, which is the developer of the Sterling Ridge subdivision. This is a replat of the, what will be the estate lots in Sterling Ridge, clear back in the southeast corner of the development. There's nine individual lots. We have a recommendation for approval from the planning department, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this development or Sterling Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson, do you have a light on? Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bouger.
Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle.
First of all, thank you for always returning my calls and always, whenever I need to set up a meeting, you're very amenable to that, and I appreciate that. From the very beginning, you have been engaged, and whenever there is a need to discuss things, you've always been there, and I appreciate that. Is there a tree plan, a plan for trees, especially along that southern border?
There's, we have an effective tree mitigation plan for the Sterling Ridge development, for the overall development that we're required to comply with. That is still in effect in accordance with our subdivision agreement plan. So I can't tell you exactly what the landscape plan is along the southern boundary. I think there's already existing trees along that southern boundary, and I do not know exactly what the plan for tree removal or new trees are. Bob, do you have any idea about that southern boundary?
I don't think it's changed, actually, from the original plan. So I think the original landscape plan is still in effect. This was a platted, this was one platted lot when the development was originally approved.
I remember that.
And we had a landscape plan that we were required to submit when we had the original approval. And nothing has changed since that. This particular, there won't be any grading along that fence line or anything that will change the...
Jim, I need you to forward that to me again.
Sure.
Because I need it as evidence when I'm talking to people.
Sure.
Okay. And then the other question that I have is, how are you going to mitigate, now that it's a dry season, some of the dust that blows? Are you going to go in once, two, three times a week, water it down? What's your plan?
Well, I think that when we were at Planning Board, there's, we actually have a stockpile of dirt back there, which is kind of really the issue. So we, our plan is to hopefully grade as soon as we can this fall, as soon as the final plat is approved. We do have a requirement that erosion control devices and weed mitigation and plannings, I don't know, I can't tell you what the mowing schedule is or what we're doing for dust on that particular piece of dirt. I think, as I understand it, the neighbors that have been complaining recently about the dust is associated with, the mosque has started their grading over there on the, on the west side.
On the west side.
And I think that's, I think that's what my understanding is of what, where there's been some complaints recently about dust. And the grading company, they're required to, they are required to, you know, keep the dust down, and we do monitor that.
And again, I know that you've been the go-between person between grading company and me and the citizens.
Exactly.
So I appreciate that. We started off, in the early days, we started off having two meetings per year, and then we went to like one, and then it's probably been about a year and a half before we even had a meeting. So we might have to get one done sometime in August or September. Are you open to that?
You bet. I think we've traditionally done that in the fall sometime.
Okay.
And maybe when the weather's a little more temperate to go out there and if there's an onsite meeting, or I think that's kind of when we've tried to do that before.
It's a group that, the more you include them, the less they complain. And so it might be to your benefit, you know, to just meet with them for an hour and just talk through, here's what we're doing. Do you have any questions, that kind of a thing?
Yeah, I think Bob Begley, who's here today with the developers, generally attended those meetings. And then Kristin in the Lockwood office is really, I'm kind of the secondary point person, but Kristin, I think, has been feeling most of those phone calls recently.
Okay.
We will certainly participate in that meeting.
August, September, something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
We've moved and seconded to approve item 14. Doctor, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is adopted, 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Liquor, item number 15, Pan Asian Terrace, 1201 South 157th Street, Suite A1, Class C liquor license, application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Thomas Green, 1131 Chicago Circle, here on behalf of the applicant.
To answer any questions?
To answer any questions you would have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed.
Okay. She's out of the chamber. Motion approved.
Second. It's moved and seconded to approve item 15. Roll call, Mr. President. Any further lights, Mr. Chairman? I mean, Mr. Clerk.
There's no further lights, but the council member, Milton, stepped out of the chambers.
Okay.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
15 is adopted, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Item number 16, Club Vibe, 1901 LeMo Street, new application, new location. You have a class, it's a Class C liquor license, you have communications permits, inspections, and they need to get their required fence permits. And you have communications from the president and manager requesting an amendment to amend it from a Class C to a Class I and to amend the Form CB Limited Liability Company LLC, insert O.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Jeremy Nichols, 604 South 22nd Street. I am the sole owner of Club Vibe LLC, here to answer any questions for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, Mr. Nichols, would you come back up?
Yes.
First, you said you're the sole owner?
Correct, yes.
That's one of the amendments, makes him the sole owner.
Okay. Because Mr. Scharf was previously involved?
That is correct, at the beginning, and then had some issues to be, then he had to be removed from the LLC and the business in general, so...
Okay. And so will he be working in any way at the business?
No, that is incorrect.
He will not be?
Right, correct. Sorry.
So he'll have no involvement of any kind, either as an owner or as an employee of the operation?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, there's a little bit of history on the property. And notwithstanding the glowing reviews your new landlord has for you personally or your business plan, which I respect a lot, the neighborhood itself has a painful recent past with regard to the most recent operator at that location. Are you familiar with all that?
Yes, I was kind of told what happened previously.
So I received a letter from the 19th Street Lofts Association, which is within a block, and their leader, their president, reminded me, although I didn't need to be reminded, because there were many 1:00 AM evenings that I spent down there with the police trying to see what in the world was going on. And they bring up this past. So I'm going to ask you some questions so that you understand at least my expectations as you move forward for how this business will be operated, okay?
Yep, that's correct.
I believe when you took out your paperwork from the city, if you haven't already, you will be signing your acknowledgement that you have been provided, read, and understand the city's good neighbor ordinance.
Yes, that's correct.
And basically, what that does is you're attesting that you've read that ordinance, you understand it. And what that means is, is if you're not operating as a good neighbor, you could lose your certificate of occupancy if the planning department issues a notice that you're violating it, and then we act to rescind that.
Yes, I understand that. Yes, correct.
And with nightclubs that operate typically with promoters, and they attract crowds that then lose control of, and things spill out into the streets, and there's issues going on with the crowds outside, that's when we start to hear about those things, and then that initiates that process.
Gotcha.
So tell me what it is that you're going to be doing for your operation to give your neighbors and me some peace of mind that we won't have to worry about that.
Yeah, definitely. Well, first off, I've been in the entertainment industry for a long time, DJed for quite a while. So the whole hiring somebody to come out and bring in different people that I have no idea what they're going to do or what type of acts they're going to do is not going to happen. I'm going to approve everybody. I will do all the scheduling and stuff like that. Just looking to do bands, comedians, hypnotists, just to do more of a live, kind of a venue plus a little bit of dance. I'm also the general manager of Little King in the Old Market, and I'm franchising that in there as well. So while you're watching a comedian or hypnotist or band, whatever, you can have a sandwich delivered to your table. So just doing, end up like going to charge a cover charge, you know, just going to make sure that people that come in have money to spend. Nobody's coming in there to cause ruckus or start fights, like that. It's just not going to be the type of place. I've done a lot of work in reconstructing the place to make it different, something a little more inviting than what's been in the past. So that's what I'm just kind of going forward to give Omaha something different, I guess, for the area.
All right. I would encourage you to reach out to the neighbors. There's a lot of businesses there, too. There's a restaurant immediately next door that has a nice operation going. There's the business across the street. To the, to the west of you, there's another business that operates. And if you haven't met your neighbors, would you agree that, at least in the block and the east-west direction and the one house to the south, you'll reach out to them so they know who you are and how to contact you in the event that there's something going on at the place that they have a question or concern about?
Okay, yeah, I would agree to that.
Okay. What I'd like you to do is, and I'm going to go ahead and recommend approval today, is to understand that we're going to, as the liquor committee of the city council, we're going to, if my councilmembers are agreeable, bring you back in six months to see how you're doing.
Okay.
And so that you know that, at least in this first six-month period, there's some sort of accountability to make sure you've met your neighbors, they know how to get ahold of you, to see that the operation's under control. Fair enough?
Yeah, definitely.
All right. So with that understanding, I would, do we need to move to amend?
Yes, we do.
I would first move to amend from a Class C off-sale to onsite Class I.
Class I. And you might as well move at the same time the Form 3B Limited Liability Company, which makes him the sole owner.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded to, for the amendments on item 16, no further lights. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Now I would move to approve with that amendment, subject to and contingent upon the applicant getting the proper permits issued and coming back into the liquor committee in six months for a, an update on the license activities.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item 16, including those amendments and conditions for permits. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
to appoint Sharice Stevens' manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Sharice Stevens, 7101 South 83rd Street. I am the manager applying for Century Omaha Hospitality, doing businesses at Ramada Plaza Omaha, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 17. There are no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 19, Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, 102 South 10th Street, request permission to appoint Heather Rutledge, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Heather Rutledge, Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, LLC, DBA Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, 102 South 10th Street. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 18. There are no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 19, Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, 102 South 10th Street, request permission to appoint Heather Rutledge, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Heather Rutledge, Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, LLC, DBA Spencer's for Steaks and Chops, 102 South 10th Street. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 19. There are no lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 20, ShopCo. number 56, 14445 West Center Road, request permission to appoint Ian Butler, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Ian Butler from 6030 South 193rd Avenue, Omaha. I'm here to represent ShopCo., Operating Company LLC, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 20. No lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
20 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 21 is Mega Savers at 2014 L Street, request permission to appoint Tamira Samik, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Tamira Samik, TFL Inc., DBA Mega Saber, 2014 L Street. I am here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item 21, and no lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 22 through 24, take as one. 22 is Mega Savers at 107 80Q Street. 23 is Mega Savers at 3402 South 42nd, and 24 is Mega Savers at 89 28 Maple Street. Request permission to appoint Kamal Samir, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 22, 23, and 24, today. Proponents, please.
Kamal Samir, 12917 Beany Street, TFL Inc., DBA Mega Saber. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items 22 through 24. There are no lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 through 36 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda, items numbers 25 through 36, were held on June 14th, 2016.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve. There are no lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 through 36 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda, items numbers 37 through 44, today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve items 37 through 44. There are no lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
37 through 44 adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 45 through 59 shall be held on the third reading.